Yes, it is. They told me that downstairs.
Okay, that's fine. I'll just... Don't worry about it. It just asks me if you want to. Yeah.
I have no idea. If you double tap the screen, it'll turn into make you...
Oh, different type of crime.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the general agenda. Correction item of minutes from April 25th, meeting of 2022. Correction, item 4E is listed and we come here with an explanation. Minutes of the regularly held meeting of May 12, 2022 is presented with a correction of item 13D for public works and local arts grants award to the West Marine Central Orchestra. Corrected to $1,500. Approval of minutes of special meeting held May 27, 2022 presented. Is there a motion?
So, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Also a notice of executive session to discuss pending litigation. Madam Solicitor, who is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. At this time, we do have the opportunity to have public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the commissioners and may just go at this time. We would just ask that you state your names and your addresses for the record. Can you keep your comments to frame us?
You guys can go first.
The podium's over there. Thank you.
And we heard that there's 42 pages of documents. The first two pages on top is a fire report. Oh, I'm sorry. Sharon Mickey from Denett Manor. The first two pages are a fire report. In that fire report, it talks about how our stoves are so... That they're a big safety hazard with the... The stoves in our apartments leaking gas all the time. Person had turned the gas on and left, and the building was filling up with gas. What happened was, fire department came, and Mr. Manley was the one that ran in and out of the apartment to get it ventilated. The second report, that has to do with the second report I gave you. And on page three, which we... I think it's the fourth page again. It talks about a CO2 level. And in apartment 104, it states that CO2 level is 988. And then the bedroom is 837. And I think that's awful high for a small efficiency apartment, because rooms are lighter divided. Along with that report also talks about... Where they talked about, at the HUD meeting in Greensburg, they said there was no moles. This report concludes that there was multiple butt moles. And if you read through the report, it breaks it down into apartment 104. I know the lady that lives there. And if you read through, and if you read through the report with the moles and what it can affect in its lungs and what are the symptoms that are caused that come from it. She's probably had about five out of seven. She's had dizziness, which she couldn't explain, short of breath. She's had an awful lot of problems with her health. And I believe that this report has to do with that, because she's lived in that same apartment for, I think, seven years. I myself have gone from a simple VRN allergy med to a full-time syrup temp patient. So, and I've never had problems before. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention and let you... This report to you. It kind of goes over it again and again, three different ways. But I did want to bring this to your attention. I will be bringing it to the board's attention. This is the report they gave me telling us there's no mold, but it clearly states there's mold. Few other things I want to talk about is getting those stoves replaced. Either people are taking the knobs off, so they don't accidentally bump them. I myself have gone to the neighbors, because I have an electric starter. I don't know why they can't firm shutters with those. But I've turned the gas on and had the flame come up. Trying to reach above it and pull seasonings down. So, they are dangerous, and we need to have that replaced. And we also need to have those vents cleaned out, so that these symptoms don't keep reoccurring and more people getting sick. I'm just anxious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to tell you, I put my application in for city housing.
My name is Herschel Craneak. I live at Denett Manor also. I also am a mental health consumer and advocate for the mental health people. I have issues dealing with stress and anxiety. And, yes, things are progressing with the construction down there, the plumbing and everything. However, we are now being given papers saying that we have to go through three different inspections within the next month. All right. I have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is, on these last two pages, they have confusing messages. It starts out, "To prepare for the move, we must meet after walk for inspection for bedbugs." This will occur on June 20th at 9:00 a.m. or June 21st. Whatever apartments we do not get done on June 13th will be finished on June 15th. They are not... Okay, I've spoken with other people about this. And what they're saying is that the new apartments are supposed to be done by June 13th, and at the latest, on the 15th of June. And then, you know, the next inspection will occur on June 20th. But I dealt with a lot of different people throughout my life. And I need to have things explained to me in a simple way, so that I understand what they're saying. And this totally confused my husband and myself. Because, and, you know, okay, they're a county-run business, but yet they can't even put down on paper exactly what they are doing correctly. You know, and to me, I say that it's the manager who is at fault in giving us mixed messages in that manner, and something should be done about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning. Nicole Harshman.
Good job.
I would like to again urge the county commissioners to start a citizens council to oversee all public housing and public welfare needs. Time and time again, we have shown that they're willing to retaliate. And I have been in contact with County Commissioner Chu about the retaliation that happened to me directly. It is not going to be tolerated. You could send as many people to my neighbors to knock on their doors all they want. They're very well aware of the activism I work for change. Literally, y'all are letting people live in places with mold, and then whenever they speak up, you let cops come and harass them. You let people harass their neighbors. It is none of my neighbor's business if I receive medical insurance or not. But now it is. Thank you very much. The retaliation needs to end. We need a community oversight board of all of this, because it is happening beyond me. I'd like to give credit where credit is due. I'd like to thank County Commissioner Doug Chu, who saved the home of a 19-month-old with one phone call. I sent you an email with all of the proof that the union mission is withholding funds until landlords can evict. I said, "Golf, per unit, what else do you need to know that they are taking retaliatory actions against us?" How many 19-month-olds need to be on the street before you get out of your ruling class-ness and come down here with us, people that are getting retaliated against? I'll be here every single time to speak against the abuse that is happening. You could pass them up, "Oh, you want that this is on you." Why are they sending people to people, to my neighbors? Why are the union mission... Why is the union mission withholding funding? Over twice as much funding as this little 19-month-old baby was being evicted for? The union mission had. One message from Representative... Sorry, County Commissioner Chu. And, oh my gosh, all of a sudden, the union mission found over $4,000 in funding that could have avoided an eviction. But instead, I had to volunteer my time yet again to do a job that y'all are paid entirely too much to do, because you're failing to do your job. Please do your job. Thank you.
I'm Herschel Craneak again. I would also like to address the issue on the back of the last two pages. We are tentatively moving on the list. However, I have a problem with moving from the sixth floor to the fourth floor when, on the same day, somebody is moving from the eighth floor to our four. And I have brought this up to our manager and said, "Don't you think it would be a lot easier to move us from one end of the hall to the other end of the hall?" And the other people just moved from the eighth to the fourth floor. And he said, "Well, everybody has different circumstances and everything." They're in the same circumstance that we are in, and it would be less confusing for the movers to move us on the elevator and have both four... I addressed this with Jim Kusler or Kershner this morning. And he told me that he would talk to Tim, the manager. But I would just like you all three to know this also is... You know, there are... I'm not the only one with mental health down there. So, there are a lot of people down there who are also getting confused, mixed messages. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else in public comment? See, Madam Solicitor?
I would like to thank you for... We did have a victory. Everybody's going back to their original homes. Yes. So, thank you.
Before we move on to the agenda, I would like to note that there were five public comments that were submitted online, and they were being made part of the minutes, and they were available to anyone who had attendance outside here on Wednesday. Now, when we move on to the agenda, the first items for consideration are the proclamations, certificates of service for social recognition and the hours of service on the one of the agenda.
Is there a motion?
So, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The first item, the solicitor's report, is from the proclamation. At item 1A, there are four of the veterans that grant funds. We're in a standing with AOPC in the amount of $19,984 for veterans' support and for drug support.
Mr. Chairman, I move block one for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The second items are from Area 8018. The first item is acceptance of donation from the estate of Eleanor G. Charles in the amount of $500. At item B, the amount is corrected from $335,444 to $320,859. So, please consider for approval the award of a contract to the Nutrition Group for senior center services for New Elefanti Flors and Valley Senior Centers in the amount of $320,859. And at item C, consider for approval items 1 through 5 for the term of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, as set forth in the agenda. And in item D, consider for approval the agreements for the term of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, including items 1, 2, and 3. The providers of services and the amounts are set forth in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 2 with this Madam Solicitor's correction to item B for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Third item is from Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. At item A, consider for approval a linkage collaborative service agreement with Wesley Family Services for a two-year period effective May 11th, 2022. At item B, consider for approval an amendment to an agreement with Hoplesses of Southwestern Pennsylvania in the amount of $17,847 for intellectual disabilities. At item C, consider for approval the agreements set forth in items 1 through 14 for the terms July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Again, the providers of services and the amounts are set forth in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 3 for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The fourth items are from Children's Bureau. At item 1, consider for approval the purchase of service agreement with Presley Ridge in the amount not to exceed $519,310 for the Home Builders Program. At item 2, consider for approval an agreement with Foundations First for assessments counseling services for the term July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, in accordance with the fee schedule. And at item 3, consider for approval the agreement set forth in the agenda at items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, M, J, K, L, M, N for the term of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Again, the providers of services and the amounts are set forth in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 4 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The fifth item is from the Coroner. At item A, consider for approval the purchase of two 22 Board Interceptors from Mauro Isle cells in the amount of $90,716 pursuant to Co-Stars.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Coroner's block for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The sixth item is from the election bureau. At item A, consider for approval a notice of intent to request and accept grant funds from the 2022 Alexon Security Grant Pursuit to the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2020 in the amount of $30,887.82.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 6 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The seventh items are from Human Resources. At item A, consider for approval a license agreement with CBL, Westmoreland LP in the amount of $750 to hold the job there at the mall on June 28th, 2022. At item B, consider for approval the advertising agreement with CBL, Westmoreland LP in the amount of $270 in connection with the job there at the mall. And at item C, consider for approval the personnel actions set forth on page 7 in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 7 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The eighth items are from Information Systems. At item A, consider for approval a professional services agreement with G-Safe Technologies in the amount of $3,375 for 25-hour block of onsite consultation, analysis, and guidance for the county's technological environment. The agreement commences on June 9th, 2022, and will expire only when all purchase hours have been utilized. At item B, consider for approval acceptance of a quote issued of a purchase order for a license agreement support plan with IQ Net Solutions through the Reseller Link Computer Corporation in the amount of $4,702.32 for a switchboard attendant software upgrade and license renewal. And at item C, consider for approval the record access agreement set forth in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move block A for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The ninth items are for juvenile detention and juvenile shelter. At item A, consider for approval a professional services agreement with Marley Jacobs in an amount not to exceed $8,400 for the summer school instruction for the juvenile detention for the term of June 30th, 2022 through August 5th, 2022. And at item B, consider for approval a similar professional services agreement with Rachel Sage for summer school instruction at the youth shelter in the amount of $8,400.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 9 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The tenth items are from the committee. At item A, consider for approval a resolution adopting and authorizing the submission of Westmoreland County's fiscal year 2022 annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The programs and the amounts are set forth in the agenda for the grants. At item B, consider for approval a resolution authorizing a substantial amendment to fiscal years 2020 and 2021 of the county's CDVG program. At item C, consider for approval the sub-recipient agreement amendment set forth in the agenda. At item D, consider for approval a resolution authorizing a minor amendment to fiscal year 2019 of the county's CDVG program. At item E, consider for approval an amendment 1 to the CDVG/CD sub-recipient agreement with Home Build Home in order to add an emergency shelter budget increase of $232,000. At item F, consider for approval a resolution authorizing the county to prepare, execute, and file a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of Budgets Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program round in the amount of $500,000 and $1,532,750. The grant funds will be used for improvements at Phase 2 at the Westmoreland Distribution Park North Side. At item G, consider for approval a resolution authorizing the county to enter into a cooperation agreement with IDC, whereby the county will act as an agent for IDC and submit a grant application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Budget Office Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program in connection with the grant set forth in item P. At item H, consider for approval an agreement with the Central Westmoreland Habitat for Humanity for the county to provide up to $5,000 per unit in healthy home funds for 15 units within Westmoreland County. And at item I, consider for approval a similar agreement with Westmoreland County... Excuse me, with Central Westmoreland Habitat for Humanity to provide up to $20,000 per unit in blood hazard control for 15 units within the county.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 10 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The eleventh item is from the prison. At item A, consider for approval the acceptance of a quote and ratification of purchase order with Industrial Electric Corporation in the amount of $7,153 for the split-phase GPS replacement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 12th items are from public safety. At item A, consider for approval the acceptance of a statement of work in issuance of a purchase order with Global Data Consultants LLC in the amount of $21,133.1 for migrating the Office of Public Safety to Microsoft Office 365. And at item B, consider for approval of the First Amendment to the CDVG block grant sub-recipient agreement between Union Mission and the county. For its Department of Public Safety approved on January 14th, 2021, to terminate the agreement as the activity has been canceled.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 12 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 13th items are under Public Works. At item A, consider for approval the rejection of all bids for the summer kitchen cannot be approved with Westmoreland Conservation District. At item B, consider for approval the award of a bid to Costco Paving in the amount of $242,825 for resurfacing of Irwin Harmony Road. At item C, consider for approval the award of a bid to A. Folino Construction Inc. in the amount of $27,000 for resurfacing of the county warehouse parking lot at One Pendineir Avenue. At item D, consider for approval a scheduled modification and revised completion date for the Pendot Agreement with Gibson Thomas, with the new completion date being December 31st, 2022. At item B, consider for approval a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program. They are for three locations on Mount Pleasant Road and also at the intersection of Route 119 and Grand Boulevard in the amount of $300,000. The grant would be for a three-year term. At item F, consider for approval a music performance trust fund's terms and conditions for the 2022 Summer Content Series at Cedar Creek Park. At item G, consider for approval an agreement with Tri-County Federation of Musicians, Local 592, to provide the Sunday concerts at Cedar Creek Park at the times and dates set forth in the agenda. At item H, consider for approval a resolution with the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources in order to close out the Westmoreland County's Community Conservation Partnerships Grant Contract for the Westmoreland Heritage Trail feasibility study. At item I, consider for approval a license agreement with Keylow Charge LLC in order to provide a turnkey project to install, manage, and maintain electric vehicle charging stations for the Westmoreland County Parks Department. And in item J, consider for approval an agreement with the Westmoreland County Blind Association for secure document destruction services from August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2023, at a monthly service fee of $450. At item K, consider for approval a dentum number 2 to Constellation Energy Solutions, a subsidiary of Constellation Energy Inc., for the extension building and annex pumping station in the amount of $518,750. At item L, consider for approval a trail easement with Export Borro of the Westmoreland Heritage Trail Export Borro Tuggering Extension, Phase 4. At item M, consider for approval an emergency resolution to authorize an emergency contract with Hamacher Contracting in the amount of $67,935 for the pavilion rebuild at Hamuth Park. And item N, consider for approval the acceptance of a quote from Elf Air Conditioning Heating in the amount of $12,081 for the Mechanic Center Senior Recreation Room HVAC replacement.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 13 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 14th item is from the tax office. At item A, consider for approval the sale of a property set forth in the agenda from the Repository of Unsold Properties.
Mr. Chairman, I move 14 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 15th items are from Westmoreland County. At item A, consider for approval a First Amendment to a parking lease agreement with the City of Greensburg in order to reduce the number of spaces from 148 to 118 at the lot set forth in the agenda and at the reduced rate of $7,080 per month. At item B, consider for approval a First Amendment to the parking lease agreement with North Huntington Square LP to reduce the number of spaces from 34 to 15 spaces at the Bean and Magath parking lot at the rate of $750 per month. At item C, consider for approval a resolution authorizing expenditure under the United States Department of the Treasury Corona Buyers Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in the amount of $12,081 for the Mechanic Center Senior Recreation Room HVAC replacement. At item D, E, F, G, and H, consider for approval the stipulations of settlements in connection with the tax assessment appeals that are set forth in the agenda. The property owner, the tax map numbers, the tax shares, and the revolving assessments... The property owner, the tax numbers, the tax years, and the revolving assessments are set forth at each item.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 15 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The sixteenth items are from Westmoreland Manor. At item A, consider for approval the Nursing Facility Service Agreement, Routine Hospice Care with the Celtic Hospice and Pelative Care Services, Doing Businesses, Allegany Health Network Health Care at Home Hospice and Pelative Care for a term of one year beginning on the effective date and continuing automatically unless terminated sooner. At item B, consider for approval a respite care addendum to the Nursing Facility Service Agreement, Routine Hospice Care with Celtic Hospice and Pelative Care Services LLC. At item C, consider for approval a Business Associate Agreement with Celtic Hospice and Pelative Services LLC. At item D, consider for approval an Inpatient Services Agreement with Celtic Hospice and Pelative Care Services LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move block 16 for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And finally, under Miss Alene's business, consider for approval at item one, the amendments to the 2021 budget and 2022 budget. At item two, consider for approval the appointment of Sean Denny to the Local Emergency Planning Committee. At item three, consider for approval the appointment of Robert McPherson to the Westmoreland County Behavioral Health Advisory Board. At item D, excuse me, item four, the reappointment of Ted Meyer to the Westmoreland County Behavioral Health and Development Services Advisory Board. At item five, the correction of an appointment of Robert C. Hall to the Westmoreland Fayette Workforce Development Board. At item six, the reappointment of Lori English to the Westmoreland Fayette Workforce Development Board. At item seven, the reappointment of Daniel Dunyer to the Westmoreland Fayette Workforce Development Board. At item eight, the reappointment of Gloria Durango to the Westmoreland Fayette Workforce Development Board. At nine, the appointment of Rebecca A. Perry to the Westmoreland County Land Bank. And at item 10, the appointment of Jay Wood Westinger to the Westmoreland County Transit Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Miss Alene's business for approval with one correction, that item number 10, the appointment of Wood Weisinger to the Transit Authority be made to fill the term that's remaining for Rosie Wolford, who resigned.
I second that with the correction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Before we adjourn, I'd like to announce that the board of Westmoreland County Commissioners are hosting a Human Service Fair down at the Westmoreland County Community College at the Student Achievement Center, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Thursday, July 14th. We also will be hosting our public meeting there at 10:00 AM. This is to learn about our human services we have to offer in the county, our nonprofit agencies, the professionals, and the community members who are also being a part of this. So I want to say thank you to them. And with that, I move a motion to adjourn.
Can you announce, sorry, announce the job there?
I withdraw my motion.
I know, the job, thank you. It's on, that's why I did it on the agenda. June 28th, we're having a job there at the Community College from 3:00 PM, I'm sorry, at the Westmoreland Mall, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. June 28th, 3 to 7, Center Court of Westmoreland Mall. And we have over how many positions?
245.
245 open positions in the county. So no friends, family, please send them to the mall and our county website.
With that, may I motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second.